I'd like to call to order the school board meeting of the King George County Schools. If you'd please stand for the invocation and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence. You bow with me, please. We're gonna pray first. Our gracious Almighty God, I thank you so much for today. Lord, I'd ask that you would bless this meeting. Lord, I would ask that in everything that we do, we always are mindful of your presence here at this meeting and in our lives. Lord, thank you that you are there and help us to always focus on the reason why we're here, and that's the students here at King George County Schools. Lord, let us always consider and do the best that we can for the students, the parents, and the schools here at King George, and it's through Christ that we pray. Amen. Gonna have the Pledge of Allegiance led by the Roar Squad at Sealston Elementary School.
Do the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation under God indivisible, with every deed just as for all.
Remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. All right, yeah, we'd like to hear a little bit from the Roar Squad if we can.
Guys, come back.
And don't run away yet.
So this is the Sealston Elementary Roar Squad. All these students are selected from 4th and 5th grade students to serve our community as safety and security patrols and help out in our leadership and our building. I will let you begin. Introduce yourself and say a little about your job.
My name is Rhea, and my job is to patrol the bus loop and then walk around the entire school to find trash.
Is it possible to turn up the sound a little bit? No? Okay. Yeah, try to speak into the mic if you can. I know it's hard.
My name is Riley, and my job is to make sure that kids aren't being bad in the hallway.
My name is Zane. I make sure people walk and respect the respect like all the rules. It's located right next to lunch, right where curbside would be.
Thank you, Zane.
My name is Xavier, and I'm partner of Rhea, which we walk around the bus loop to make sure that kids behave and walk around the school to pick up any lost and found items or trash.
Thank you.
My name is Bradley, and my job is to make sure no kids run and make sure they respect the rules at the main hallway, at the main stairs hallway.
My name is Skip, and I stand near the library doors and make sure people don't run. Bye-bye.
Thank you.
My name is Simone, and I make sure kids are kind to each other and safe by walking through the hallway.
My name is Annalee. I have a partner who isn't here today, and we stand outside Miss Patch's room, and then, once the bell rings, we say the announcements, the morning announcements.
Thank you.
My name is Cheyenne, and I make sure people don't trip and fall.
All right, let's give them a hand.
Thank you.
Thank you very, very much. Appreciate all the work that you guys do, helping the school be orderly and safe. Thank you, thank you. Any questions from, don't go yet. There might be a question. Wait a minute. Some have already gone back to their seat. All right, board members, you have any questions for the Roar Squad here?
No, but thank you all.
Yeah, are you able to identify with what teachers kinda go through and administrators a little bit? I see all the nods. That's excellent. Any other comments from board members? All right. Thank you very much for all the work that you do. Appreciate it. Let's give another hand. All right, I have to apologize. I know that there may be some other board members it's happened to, but my computer basically said restart or postpone. I hit postpone, and I found out if I keep doing that, it then won't do it anymore. So now my computer's restarting, but we'll go forward. But I'm mentioning that to the other board members. If it happens, we understand. Just go ahead and hit restart the first time, because it's just gonna come back postpone, postpone.
I'm on, and I'm good.
Okay, good. And I apologize for that interruption, but if you get it, hit restart the first time. All right, we do have some comments on the public comments, and let's remember that this is only for residents of King George, or for staff members, or for any family members, or any relation that you might have in King George. Please state your name, and also what voting district you're from, and you'll have three minutes. And we have Mr. Stat. Please come forward.
Good evening, board members. My name's Anthony Stats. I live at 9007 Clare Street, and I reside in the Shiloh District. I just, a couple of comments I have, looking over the board packet for tonight. I'm very, very concerned with the chronic absence of this county. It's something we're still dealing with from the pandemic. It's something that's gonna be a long-term issue in this county, but if we don't find ways to drive kids to wanna come to school, if we don't try to fill the gaps now, we're gonna be seeing in 10, five years, you know, we're gonna see real implications of grades starting to drop. So that's why something like what I've been advocating for, community service hours, getting kids involved in local communities, getting kids involved in the schools. Hey, come join if you're from the high school. Come join the PCSA. I'm the treasurer. Come, we would love to have you. We need to start addressing that. And I think something else that is scathing in this report is the score that we got with dealing with students with disabilities. I think it is a glaring hole in our county that students with disabilities continually score lower than regular students. Now, given that they are, you know, students with disabilities, we should be providing extra funding, extra resources for these students. I'm very, very optimistic that this county in the next couple of years will have a true way forward on how we deal with the gaps when it comes to chronic absences. Hopefully, with this next budget season, we'll be able to get more money for the schools to deal with those type of things. But I just wanna shoot up some red flags, saying if we don't address this these next couple of years, we will really be feeling the real evil that that chronic absence is, because as you look at the report that you'll be presented on later tonight, you can already see that the remnants of the COVID absences are starting to affect 9th graders and 10th graders. If you look at their math and reading scores that we were given, I'm very, very concerned with that, and I hope the board will address them in the coming years. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody online? No? All right, let's move on. Do we have any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to pull the minutes for August 21st and September 6th from the consent agenda.
And what's your reason?
I need to discuss those separately.
Okay.
Some corrections.
All right, any other changes to the agenda? All right, let's move on. Presentations. The first one will be King George Education Space Camp.
Good evening, board. Thank you so much for having us out here. My name's Dave Zook. I'm a member of the King George Education Foundation Board, and as you may recall, we've had a tradition with the help of the Broadwood Scholarship and a community scholarship over the last three years to be able to offer scholarships to some of our elementary school students. The scholarships have been targeted at 5th grade students, and before I joined the board, I, my daughter Sarah was selected here, so she'll be coming up to tell you about her experiences, and she has a PowerPoint she'd like to run you through. After that, I'd like to take a moment to just announce the scholarships for this coming year and the changes we've put in place.
Sounds good. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Sarah Zook, and this is the presentation on Space Camp. So originally, I wrote this in the idea that I was talking to elementary school students about like the process I went through and what it was like. So let's get started. Um, well, basically, first, why apply? First of all, you may have a lot asked yourselves why I should even apply. There's so many reasons you should apply, and I'm going to tell you a few reasons why I applied. I applied because I thought NASA Space Camp would be an extraordinary opportunity for me to learn more about black holes, dark matter, and how forces like gravity affects space and time, and the physics of the universe. I'm so fascinated about how humans are affected by space, and I hope to learn about the technology that can reduce the negative effects of space on humans. I'm also really excited to meet people that worked at NASA and support missions in space, so I can see how the smallest tasks can make a huge impact. I was looking forward to working with kids my age to solve problems and find answers to that challenges. Basically, for the application process, I know the application can seem like a lot. It's long, and there's a lot you have to do, but trust me, it's worth it. A one piece of advice I have for when doing your application is take your time and be you. Don't try to write in a way you think you'd win. Like, write about what you actually believe. The things you have to do are get two teacher recommendations and one parent one, design your own mission patch, and explain what it's about. Write two essays and get five photos of what you, like, what leadership activities you do, and explain what you're doing in each photo. The packing. So they have a packing list on the NASA website that you can, like, go through, make sure you have everything. Make sure you definitely have, like, all your bed linens and, like, towels and everything, because they don't provide those. But if, they have good, like, a good list of everything you need. Just like, make sure you have, depending on the weather, like, what you might need. That's one thing that I didn't really have, but other than that, it's a pretty good list. The flight. So there are so many ways you can get to Space Camp, but I chose to fly as an unaccompanied minor. I was really nervous the first time, because it'd be my first time flying by myself, but the process was really safe and easy. Someone was always there to help me and make sure I was safe, um, and where I was supposed to be. Even though my parents weren't there, I still felt safe, because the stewardess were very helpful, and like, they'd provide if I had any questions, or like, make sure I got to the place where I needed to go. It was really nice. Arriving and introduction. After we got to Space Camp, they had us check in and put our stuff down. Once everyone got settled, we got in our dorms and gotta go to dinner. After dinner, we gotta go into introduction presentation. They talked about the schedules and expectations of us, and then we finally got to meet our crew trainer, the person that guides us. They basically help us through the day. We follow them. They teach us their lessons and everything. The dorms and food. I slept in a room with a lot of other girls, and then they have a separate one for boys. There's lots of different bunks, different places. It's a very crowded, we're saying there's like three bunks. That's very crowded. But we slept on the bunk beds. We had lockers in the back of the room. Right outside our room, there was restroom where you could take showers, get dressed, brush your teeth. We got three meals a day, so if you have any allergies or food restrictions, you could get special food. You'd apply that to the application, like, once you get in, and they would do any needs you need. The astronauts and the, okay, these were really fun. We got to go on three different simulators. They let us experience what it would be like for actual astronauts in space. The Five Degrees of Freedom Simulator was basically, you could rock back and forth and pinch you. Like, it's where you gotta move in all the different directions, and then you gotta go up on like this board and move up and down like you were actually on a spacecraft. And then the Multi-Access Trainer, okay, that was the, so fun. That was my favorite one. You could basically just spin around in all different directions while, like, in this little circle, and it was really cool, because like, you don't get nauseous, though, because the way your position's and the inner canal in your ear, like, it, the liquid there doesn't move around, so like, you don't even feel sick. And then the last one was the 1/6 Gravity Chair. It basically helped you feel like what it would be like walking on the moon. It was really cool. Like, you could jump, you can move, but not too high, so you don't break the thing. My mission. This was one of my other favorite things. So we were put in a mission where you had to perform jobs like astronauts would do. There's lots of different parts of the mission. Like, you could be in the mission control. You could be a mission specialist. You could be the flight director, all kinds of stuff. But I was chosen as mission specialist, so I got to perform an EVA of extravehicule activity. In my EVA, I gotta go up in a chair that would make it feel like 1/6 gravity, and I had to climb up a structural and install a solar panel while holding onto the wall. It helped us to experience what it would be like if we actually had to do repairs on a ship while in space, and we went through a whole other simulator where we flew there, had to do experiments, and it was very cool. The space lessons. Throughout the week, we had a lot of lessons. If you, I think every day we had about like three or four, on different space-related things, for like Mars exploration to exoplanets, they'd be, yeah. But the lessons could range from 40 minutes to 1 hour and 30 minutes. Some of the time after lesson, we perform a project or activity related to what we just learned, but a lot of the time it would just be instruction, and then like they'd tell us, and maybe like a quiz, and it would kinda like school, but like, a little bit more, I don't know, just like saying, like, fun. Like, not fun, but like, a little bit more engaging. Graduation. For graduation, we gotta go up on the stage and receive a certificate for completing a Space Camp. So your parents could drive you down or fly down if they wanted to see your graduation ceremony, but there was also a live cam recording where you could, like, see what they're doing. At the end of the ceremony, there were special awards. A few of the awards you could get as a team, but there was also one you could get as an individual. My team got the Captain's Cup Award, which means all the other groups, we did the best on our mission and other projects. So like, we had the best time. We worked together the best, but basically. And then out of the 300 or 400 kids, I got picked to receive the Right Stuff Award. So this was, it's awarded to a trainee that exemplifies courage, integrity, and excellence of the early space explorations and test pilots. They basically pick one person for each camp time that shows all of those, and that's very respectful and goes above and beyond, and I got awarded that. The impact of Space Camp. So the memory of Space Camp is one I'm gonna remember for a long time and cherish so much. It's made a lifelong impact on me. I've learned so much from Space Camp that I know will help me in the future. Going to Space Camp has made me have more of a desire and drive to reach the stars, be who I wanna be, and take every opportunity I'm presented with. Because of Space Camp, I am more knowledgeable, ambitious, resourceful, confident, adventurous, and hardworking. Overall, because of Space Camp, I'm a better person inside and out, and I finally, I have learned that I can be small compared to what's out there, if I'm not insignificant. And then there's questions slide, I think. Yeah.
Well, first of all, thank you so much. Wow, did you write all this?
Yeah.
Well done. Let's give her a hand. Good, great. Thank you. That was extremely well-written, well-done. You presented it very well, and I'm sure there'll be a couple of questions, so I'll go last. Question?
Yeah, I have a couple. So first of all, I mean, no insult to any of the staff members that are gonna present this evening, but your presentation will definitely be the highlight of the evening, so thank you.
That's right.
Um, I have a couple of questions. So did they, did you get to eat freeze-dried food, like astronauts, or did they feed you real food?
Oh, so that would've been cool, but in the gift shop, they would have freeze-dried food. It's just, we didn't eat that. It was like regular meals. Every day, they would have like an entree, different meals, and then like a dessert afterwards. You just use the ice cream.
Yeah. I remember when I was a kid, I had an aunt that didn't have, you know, she didn't have children, and she was like the cool aunt that always got us really cool gifts. And one year, she got us all, like, the NASA, like, freeze-dried food. It was real fun to eat, like, freeze-dried ice cream. That's a lot of fun. So, so what are you gonna do next? Are you gonna participate in any of the other camps? I know they have, like, there are a variety of them that are a part of those programs. Are you, like, what are your, what do you wanna do next?
Um, I might go to some more camps. Like, I think, I just wanna, like, stay involved in the astrophysics kind of realm, because when I grow up, I do wanna be an astrophysicist. So I just wanna stay involved and, like, maybe go to a few other camps.
Yeah, for sure. And my last question is, so your first, your opening picture, was that, is that from the James Webb Telescope or the Hubble?
Um, I do know when I put it on there. I think it was James Webb.
I think it is. Yeah, they're really, yeah, I love looking through all of those photos. They're pretty amazing. Yeah, so, thank you. Amazing. It was great to hear about your experience.
Thank you.
Good. Other questions?
Can you say again where it was?
Uh, it was in Alabama.
Huntsville.
Huntsville, Alabama.
I don't, do they do any launches anymore? Do you see any launches?
Um, so we weren't in the area where they, like, would launch, but we got to see actual, like, spacecrafts that had gone to space, and there was, like, different things we could explore that had gone, but there was no, like, actual launches where we were.
Okay. And so they spun you around Five Degrees of Freedom. Say again, how, no one got sick doing that?
Well, no one got sick, because like, the way your back is positioned and your ears, you don't get sick or nauseous, because like, if one certain liquid in your ear, it's not moving around, so it just feels like you're on like a rocking chair.
Mr. Rolls, didn't you go through some of that?
I think some people got sick.
All right, that's good. Other questions?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead. Push, push the button. There.
I'm on, I'm on now. Thank you. Um, I'm delighted that you, especially as a young woman, were able to represent King George. That makes us very, very proud and gives us a lot of hope for our granddaughters, especially in the NASA world, because it was a long time coming. Um, I, have you been to Cape Canaveral? One question.
Um, no, not yet.
Please go, please go. It is just a significant place where a lot of the early flights took place. I was there when Skylab went up, and it was the most amazing thing that I've ever seen. Um, there are so many ways to participate, and I know you will be there for the next round of whatever space landings we do. Thank you again.
I was curious about the team that you were on. Are you keeping in touch with all them and, like, comparing notes about what you're gonna do in the future?
Um, so I did keep in touch for a while with one of them, but not really, just because, like, I don't know, like, they were good kids, but like, it's like hard to keep in touch when you're so far away, and I probably won't see them again, but I definitely do talk to a lot of my friends about space.
Good connections.
I have one question. Of the entire experience, you know, you had a lot of wonderful things that happened, but which one of those things would be right at the top? What was the greatest of all the great experiences? Which one would be right at the top?
Um, well, everything was amazing, but it'd probably be my mission, just because, like, it was so cool being able to go up in that, like, install a solar panel. It was just like so cool to actually be there in the simulator. I don't know, it was really cool.
Very good. Excellent. Well, extremely well-done. Thank you again. Hey Dad, did you have something to say? Besides being very proud?
I am very, very proud. I'm very lucky. Both she and my, and my, all my daughters are very successful. So what I wanna take a chance here, Yvonne, Richard, and I are gonna talk about how we're gonna approach this next year.
Okay.
So in the past, the Broadwood Scholarship was a private scholarship that was offered by Mark Bradshaw and his wife. They have moved now to Florida, and they, they're gonna use their money directly to Space Camp now. But in the meantime, we had, actually, as the board, coordinated with the CFRR fund, and we were able to secure about $5,000 towards Space Camp scholarships for this coming year. So what that's gonna allow us to do is to open up some of the restrictions that were placed on the scholarship previously. And look, again, we think it's a perfect time. I think the 5th graders are where we want to target this. You know, Sarah went, you know, even though she was an 11-year-old at, in a 9 to 11-year-old group, she had a lot of fun. She got to be in leadership roles and management roles. We are gonna look as, as we work with the CFRR to try to expand and, and grow the resources we can get back from them, and if that's successful, we may look at offering a Space Academy opportunity, whereas targeting 12 to 15-year-olds. And they do a little bit more detailed hard science, more experimentation, but the fun stuff is what they're really getting in Space Camp.
Yeah.
And that's, that's where we're gonna target it again this year. So with those two scholarships, it gives about $800 additional for transportation if the, if the students need it. If they don't need it, we're gonna be really close to getting, offering a third scholarship. So I hand all that, all the scholarship selection, though, over to Yvonne and the, and the elementary school teachers that she runs. I'll hear her tell you about that.
Good evening. This week, our students in 5th grade will be invited to apply to go to Space Camp, and I don't think I could've said it any better than Sarah. All the things that they have to do to apply, our applications this year will be due on November the 9th at 4:00 PM. All students in 5th grade may apply. They'll have to create a mission design patch and a statement to go with it. They'll have two essays, one of which about where they wanna be in 10 years and why they wanna go to Space Camp. They'll need two letters of recommendation from staff members, a parent letter of recommendation, and a leadership summary and photos. And as you can hear, Sarah has had an amazing experience, and all of our students have had, that have had a chance to go to Space Camp have come back with such amazing stories to tell. It's, I know, it's just an outstanding opportunity to go and represent King George and learn from the greatest people that they can learn from, and then come back and share with their fellow students, and hopefully, they'll be the next generation that gets to go to space. And I have known Sarah now for several years, and I really see that happening. Um, in November, the Space Camp Committee, which is made up of the STEM teachers and several members of the King George Education Foundation Board, will go over the applications and score them, and hopefully, we'll be back here in December or early January to let you know who our winners will be for this next round of scholarships, and we're really excited to be able to do this for our students. Are there any questions?
No, thank, again, thank you very much. It's a wonderful program, especially listening to somebody who just went through it. Outstanding. Again, thank you for all the work that you do in the committee.
Thank you.
All right, next in the presentations, we have the state accreditation results.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chair, school board members, Dr. Boyd, administrators, teachers, students, parents, and community members. I just wanna say, great job.
Yeah.
Before me, that was wonderful. I want to first acknowledge and thank all the board members, teachers, administrators, parents, students, for their tireless effort to keep our students first in every decision. And I appreciate your prayer earlier, that we are here for our students, and we're all working very hard to make good decisions. I'm gonna preface this presentation by saying that the state results are still preliminary results, and they just came out just about a week ago. I'm gonna try my best to present the accreditation, accreditation data tonight. The metrics of the state accountability has many variables. As I'm sure you've heard across the state, the students continue to suffer due to the pandemic, and we need to keep that in the forefront. However, we do know that not all of our students are accelerating, but our teachers, instructional specialists, staff, and administrators are working very tirelessly to bridge the gap. The state, as you know, right now, is looking at revising the accreditation process, and there is a timeline for that, so more information to follow. Okay, so accreditation overview. Just to review a little bit, um, we have academic achievement for reading, math, and science. The benchmark for reading is 75%. Math and science are 70%. They are performance levels. You've got level 1, level 2, and level 3. And then the accreditation ratings is accredited, accredited with conditions, and accreditation denied. And I'll go through a little bit more about the indicators. Okay, so academic achievement is different than my next slide. Okay, so academic achievement is different than my next slide, which is achievement gaps. So academic achievement, you level one, it meets or exceeds state standard or sufficient improvement. School demonstrates acceptable performance, performance above the state benchmark or adequate improvement from level two, which can be a reduction, um, in the failure rate. Level two is near state standard or sufficient improvement. School demonstrates performance within the specified ranges, which represent either achievement near level one or adequate improvement from level three. And then level three is below state standard. School demonstrated performance below the benchmarks for level one and level two. Or school has stayed at a level two or level three for consecutive four years. So that was academic achievement, reading, math and science. Then we go to our achievement gaps, which we have eight achievement gaps. Uh, the newest achievement gap that was added last year was your multiple races. That was the first time that was added. So we have level one, if you have all of your eight gaps, and you have one level two as a gap, you still can remain level one. Level two, if you have more than one level two in eight of your gaps with one level three, you are a level two for that whole gap for math and reading. Level three is two or more at level three and the whole reading or math will be level three. Uh, this year, we are fully accredited at every school. And at this point, I just want to remind us all that last year, current year, we were 21, 22. That was our current year last year. The previous year was 18, 19 data. The cumulative three-year data was 17, 18, 18, 19 and 21, 22, because we were waived for COVID for two years. This year is 22, 23 is our current year. Previous year is 21, 22. The three-year date, the three-year average is 18, 19, 21, 22 and 22, 23. So it can get a little confusing when you're talking about accreditation years. Okay, so this slide right here is all of our schools. We have the accreditation status. As we know, we're fully accredited. Our academic achievement is English, math and science. And then we have achievement gap, English, math and science as well. So right now, we are, if we're just talking about academic achievement for English, we are all, schools are at a level one. Academic achievement math, we are all at a level one. Academic achievement science, we have one level two at King George Elementary. And I, on the next slide, I've got percentages.
Mr. Chair, can we stop to ask a question on this slide?
What would you prefer? Wait till you're finished for questions or as you're going along?
Probably right now, yes.
Go ahead, Mr. Rolls.
Okay, so I understand the level one, two and three for the different academic achievement levels, uh, the 70%, 75%. But then when we look at the achievement gap column, I don't understand the difference between a level one, two and three there.
Okay, so if we look at, do you want to look at, um, King George Middle School academic achievement?
Sure.
English gap? I feel like if we look at the next slide, we might understand that because it's gonna break down the actual subgroup out of one of those eight subgroups. And I can look at that right now. See. So, um, for English, oh, I'm sorry, can you just go back to that slide one more time, please? I'm sorry. Okay, so for academic gap, English, we, at the middle school, we had a level two for black, a level two for economically disadvantaged and a level two for English learners and a level three for students with disabilities. So a level two, you can have as many level twos and one level three to equal a level two for that gap, for those, for the whole entire achievement gap, English. So it's eight subgroups. And there's three level two, one level three, and over here, it'll be all level two for all eight gaps.
So are you looking at the slide that says school quality indicator results by schools, achievement gap by subgroup?
I'm kind of.
Back and forth?
Back and forth, yes.
But that was one of the ones you just referred to.
Yes.
Okay.
So if you went to slide, um, if you went to the school quality indicator results by subgroup, it's like two more.
Two more slides up, John?
That one right there. If you look at the middle school for English, black 67, economically disadvantaged 66, English learners 66. And then you have a level three for students with disabilities. That is what gives the English achievement gap for the middle school a level two.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
May I add, maybe offer, so slide four is the school quality indicator achievement gap that what she walked through that categorizes each of the levels. So that's, that's what spells it out. And then slide eight is, is, is putting that in practice.
Right.
Right.
So I hope that clarifies.
Yeah, good enough. Thank you.
Thank you.
It does. I think part of the issue is that, you know, your, your explanation was very good, by the way, but it's like, internalizing that as we look at and going back and forth to the slides, it, it always takes some time with that, but thank you.
Totally understand. Okay, so I think if we go back to, then get that slide right there. Okay, so we can do another example. Um, so let's say the high school and the middle school, are level two for achievement gap. And for math, um, let's just say the middle school for math had a level two for black, economically disadvantaged and also a level three for students with disabilities. So that's why overall they are a level two.
Right.
Um, if we go to the chronic absenteeism, um, chronic absenteeism, the calculation began this year. Um, and the, um, rate for chronic absenteeism is for a level one, which we received that at Potomac, a level one, it's less than or equal to 15%. A level two is greater than 15% or less than or equal to 25%. And what chronically absent means is it means that students who miss more than 18 days or two days a month, they are called chronically absent. So it is 10% of the students that miss 18 or more days is a chronically absent school. Um, and then the college and career.
Can I ask you a question about the absences?
Yes.
Has that changed though since like the 18, 19 school year that the numbers, they've been the same?
No, they've stayed the same.
Alright, because that's important thinking about COVID and all those other things, that those rates are all the way back from 18, 19, they're still the same.
Yes, and they just waived them.
I understand.
Yeah. Um, the College Career and Civic Readiness Index, uh, became active this accreditation year. And let me preface this, um, it says school year 22, 23, but accreditation is always the year 23, 24. It's always, they always have it one year.
Right.
Okay, so we're gonna get into the rates, uh, the next slide. Okay, so we are at all school, we're fully accredited. We've got our academic achievement, English is all green. All level one. Our academic achievement math is all level one. And academic achievement science were, have a level two at King George Elementary. Um, and then chronic absenteeism, as I told you, the definition is less than or equal to 15%. So we are at a level two for four out of our five schools. Now, let me just say at this moment, um, we asked our principals to come up with an action plan for each individual level, subgroup and academic achievement in reading, math or science. Or each gap group and chronic absenteeism. And then for high school, the, uh, college career and civic readiness, readiness index. And I have those that I'll pass out to.
Repeat that.
Yes, ma'am. Um, we have asked our principals to come up with an action plan designated to either academic achievement in English, where, wherever they are. If they're a level two, we ask them how, level two, you'll bring it up to level one, level three and up. And then chronic absenteeism as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
So then, um, so I understand that's, uh, you know, looked at across the individual schools and then are we aggregating that across the division or what's the next step then?
Aggregating the total, as far as the rate or?
Like, I mean, so there, there are, you know, action plans put together across the different buildings and then we're gonna tie them together for a division.
They'll be put in the strategic plan.
Yeah, we've also got plans in place for the division as far as chronic absenteeism. And, and actually the state has a big push right now for chronic absenteeism that's come out just last week. So there's gonna be a lot of information about chronic absenteeism in the next couple of weeks, I think.
I, I, I have another question.
Yes, sir.
Um, and the, still the absentee thing is, um, you would ask all the building administrators to kind of give a report of how they can make up some of the gap and some ideas of plan. Are they also gonna be dealing with the different subgroups in the absenteeism? Is that gonna be part of that, I assume?
Yes, so our, um, I've given data to our coordinator of attendance. Um, and he has all of those gap groups that the state has provided. They don't have each eight of them, but they have, they have provided most of the, the subgroups for that.
Cause I can see where the plan might be different for different subgroups.
Correct, yes.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, so I'll probably move on to the next slide, please.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Rolls, I'd like to ask, um, so, so look at the chronic absenteeism, that's for this past year, which was pretty much post-COVID. So is that's worse than numbers pre-COVID? I mean, we having some holdover absentee problems and problems, uh, that are worse even than before COVID?
Well, last year it was waived, but I did provide data last year. Um, and I don't know where I put it.
I think Mr. Rolls was also asking about 18, 19, about before COVID, the comparison between then and now, is that correct?
Yeah, I didn't do a comparison, um, from last year because it wasn't, it was waived last year, but I can do a comparison for you.
I, I can tell you the general consensus across the state is that it's gotten substantially worse post-COVID. And for many reasons, uh, you know, we, we were in our basements, we were at home, we were learning virtually. Uh, and, and we're really trying to train our student body and, and really not just student body, our, our workforce now, many of our work, many of those in the workforce are working from home. Uh, so just reconditioning our student bodies to make sure they understand the importance of being in school is gonna be a big push coming in the next month or so.
I think the question was, well, in my mind too, as Mr. Rolls was talking and asking a question was, uh, and be, just before COVID, in that year, were there any of the five schools that were also had a chronic absentee problem? Were they at, was there a difficulty there with any of those?
You mean 19, 20?
Yes.
I have to go back. I didn't bring that data with me tonight, but I can definitely get that for you.
I think that's part of what Mr. Rolls was asking.
Dr. Boyd answered it.
Alright, yeah, I'd, I'd like to see that too, because obviously if you had, say, you know, I know this probably didn't happen. If you still had back in 19 and 20, you still had four of the five schools with absent problems and then we still have it today. While it had, obviously COVID had something to do with making it maybe worse, but did we have a problem like this even before we started COVID?
Right, I hear what you're saying.
Let's clarify.
I do have, um, I do have 19, 20 data. Um, so 19, 20.
Right.
High school was 15%.
Okay.
The middle school was 8.66. The King George Elementary was 15. Potomac was 13.3. And Sealston was 12.6%.
Okay, so they all did get significantly worse.
Yes.
Even if COVID wasn't there.
Right, and then last year, even though it was waived.
Right.
The high school was 18%, which this year.
23, 23 this year.
Yes, and the middle school was 15.4%.
Oh my goodness.
King George Elementary, 17.9%, Potomac 12.4% and Sealston 15.4%.
So it's gotten worse just since last year? Yeah.
I think the effects of what happened.
Yeah.
I don't want to speculate, but from my humble opinion, I think things are just unraveling.
Yeah.
To some extent.
Is that, do you know?
And they're seeing that across the state, like Dr. Boyd said, yes.
Is, is it across the state kind of, it's worse this year than it was last year, even though it was, they waived that year? That's very interesting.
Yes.
That's probably, okay, alright, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Let's clarify, chronic absenteeism was not used as one of the accreditation factors in 18, 19, is that correct?
I do not think it was.
I think it.
Yes, it was just brought on.
That it did not get the kind of attention that is focused on it now.
It became one of the student engagement subgroups.
I think you're right.
Uh, we also need to be mindful, uh, of the fact that for many, many years, our, uh, as you very graciously call him, coordinator of attendance, has been the entire attendance department. Mr. Jeff Smith is the only person, not, not detracting from any administrator or teacher, et cetera. Everybody does their part, but we have one person for our entire school system to monitor attendance and follow up and do case management and et cetera, et cetera. So I think, you know, before we start bashing our attendance people, person, then we need to be aware that he is pushed beyond his limit. Was for the last forever years when I hired him and he continues to be, and he continues to work extremely hard.
Thank you for that.
I agree.
That's good news. Thank you, Ms. Hocken. Or that's interesting news and not good.
Uh, Mr. Chair, just like one more question before we go on to the subgroups, if I could. So going through this, I didn't see, I mean, I understand that we have the description there for how you get level one, two and three for the different performance areas as well as the gaps. But I didn't see a description of how it rolls up to the overall accreditation for each school and whether it's fully accredited or accredited with conditions and so.
But I didn't see a description of how it rolls up to the overall accreditation for each school and whether it's fully accredited or accredited with conditions and so forth.
We're fully accredited.
Right, but what, what does that require? I mean, how, what remarks do you have to make to be fully accredited?
Well, all of our academic achievement, reading, math, and science are all level ones.
We had some gaps, if those don't affect accreditation?
No, that's a separate, I mean, it's all entwined, yes, but according to the state, whatever their metrics of accountability, we're fully accredited, and we are fully accredited for three years.
Okay, so there's not a simple way, just say, okay, is this?
It's, it's a state metric.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, stated on the second slide and left-hand side is the indicators, those are state metrics.
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, it's a state thing, but how do they determine it?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So I can't locate it on my computer at the moment, but Mr. Rolles, you may remember when we put together our superintendent evaluation, evaluation policy, all that was pulled together from these briefs and put together. And so all I'm saying, I can't pull it up and I don't recall because I don't live and breathe it. But the, what qualifies as the accredited, accredited with conditions and accreditation denied is based on your indicators. And anyway, that was all spelled out previously. We have that information and I can pull it back up, I just don't have it at the moment.
Right, we have those numbers, those are clear for English, math, and science, but as far as rolling those all up is, you know, it's not spelled out, it would just be nice to have, but.
That's fine. We do have it spelled out, is all I'm saying, we might not have it on the screen today, but we do have it spelled out.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Gonzalez, you did do a great job with that, thank you. Go ahead, you may continue unless there's more questions. All right, go ahead.
Okay.
You're doing a great job, thank you.
Thank you so much. I think we're on the slide, is that correct? Did I finish with the other slide? I believe I did.
Yes.
Okay. So for this slide are the eight subgroups. And as you can see, which subgroups are level two is our black economically disadvantaged, and we have one English learner and some students with disabilities with level two. And then we have some level three at two of the schools for the two subjects. And like I said, in the action plans, this is spelled out. And it'll be, I'll give those to you. And if you have any further questions, please let me know after you read those action plans per school.
Sorry, do we have the action plans at this point?
I do. I have them right here.
We have them.
So then the last slide is just some comparison pass rates from the state. These just came out a week ago. And you can see that we are slightly higher than most of our surrounding counties as we were last year. We were the highest out of all the surrounding counties last year as well. So we do have some successes that we can celebrate even amongst these last few years that have been very challenging. And we do, as educators, try to just hold on to the successes and try to move forward and keep bridging those gaps.
Right, okay, all right, any other questions?
Yes, Mr. Chair, so, yeah, that's, it's encouraging to see that we are doing so well in the region. But looking at the idea, I wonder, I see that we're either at or slightly below average for the state. So it makes me wonder, I mean, I would have guessed that our region would be average or slightly above. I wouldn't have guessed that the region would be below average. So it makes me wonder what parts of the state are the ones that are pulling the average up, the scores up? I mean, who are the top performers in the state? Is that like Northern Virginia?
We have larger divisions in the state of Virginia. However, even though we're a small division, the calculation and the metrics from the state are the same. Depending on if you have five thousand students or twelve hundred, it's still the same, it's still the same bench rate, benchmark rates, the same calculations, it's all the same. Whether a division has more passing on their assessments, that would raise their scores higher. At this point, within our region, we have higher pass rates.
Right.
So.
But you know, like, which, what divisions are the ones that are?
We don't know yet. It's still relatively preliminary as far as this data is concerned. We're starting to just be able to see those raw numbers. But we really haven't been able to see the raw numbers statewide yet or really know the reason behind those raw numbers. So if, if the average, and again, you know, we don't know the range of, of what has created that average. It could be a very tight range where we're talking about scores of, you know, seventy-one to seventy-five for English, maybe. Who knows? We don't, or it could be a much larger range. But we've yet to really figure out, because these, these numbers are still so raw and it's preliminary. We will, I can tell you what we do annually, we will begin to have a series of meetings with superintendents. Stacy will have meetings across the state, and we'll start to figure out some of the differences in the data and see if we can put our finger on maybe where the successes are in the state and what programs they're using. And that's certainly stuff that we stay tuned to.
Okay, thanks.
That's good. Any other questions?
Well, I thank you for all your support, and our teachers feel it, our administrators feel it, and we're just going to keep working hard.
Well, thank you again, it was a tremendous amount of work, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Hildebrand.
All right, next, we have the Technology Advisory Committee Report. If it's all right with the board, if you'll notice on the discussion item, it says technology plan. And it would be the same person making that presentation. So if, if it's all right with the rest of the board, we'd like to combine those two. And especially, I think that would also help us because we see the plan and then we can see the review right after it. Is that all right with the board?
Combining what again?
Pardon?
What are the two things?
I'm sorry, if you look on discussion item, Mr. Rolles, on the, on number, item ten, it says technology plan for twenty, twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-eight. And then in the front page, she's doing a presentation for the Technology Advisory Committee Report. So let's connect those together. So we won't have a discussion item, it'll be really right now, of course, we will discuss it after she's finished. All right, thank you very much.
Good evening, my name is Hillary Half, Supervisor of Technology. I'm here tonight to present a brief annual review on behalf of our Technology Advisory Committee. The purpose of tonight's presentation is to provide you with information about what, what we have covered in the past year, where we are today, and where we're headed this academic school year. When building our advisory committees, it's really important that we involve members from all of our stakeholder groups. I rely very heavily on this group of people because you get input from anywhere, from teachers to our ITLs, to our building technicians, building administrators, instruction department, special services. It's just a really good opportunity for the technology department to pull information in from all of these stakeholder groups. And especially in technology, no big decisions should ever be made without input from others and those who will be directly impacted. And much of the time, that is our classroom teachers. So I definitely make sure that we always have reps from all of our sites on this committee. We meet four to six times a year. We try to keep our meetings to roughly an hour to an hour and fifteen minutes, though we have been known to be there three hours later. I think last year, we stood in the middle school parking lot eating granola bars because we had missed dinner, talking about three D printers because we had people on our committee who are that passionate about that piece of technology. So our meetings do tend to run long. I tap into these folks several times a year, even though we only meet four to five times a year. These are the people I call at night, these are the people during the day, especially in our buildings that I tap into to find out information, to stay up to date with what's going on in these buildings. I usually start our agenda with the first fifteen to twenty minutes where it is just their opportunity to talk to us, to talk to the technology department and tell me what's going on. I'm not always in these buildings, and so it's really nice, depending on the time of year, to find out what is the buzz? What are our teachers' concerns? How can we help? How can I help? And so we really use this time to keep our communication wide open. This is a very generalized slide of some of the items that come up at any given time, depending on the year and depending on the season. For example, we have a meeting coming up in October. And October is really when we're starting to dive into budget, looking at some of our services, what's working, what's not? What are we spending on something? How much are teachers using it? Is it worth keeping in the budget for next year? So that October, November timeframe is really important to me, to meet with that committee and always be in touch with them in regards to that. You know, for example, in the spring when we meet, we are knee-deep in Chromebook collection, Chromebook inventory and our asset management, finding out what are missing and our damaged costs are going to be for that next year due to our one-to-one model. So that's just a brief overview. It's really important to, sometimes teachers forget that our technology department is also responsible for things like our phone service and our door access systems and our camera security and the safety of our buildings. So truly, I would say almost fifty percent of the time, our team, the technology team, is very much engrossed into that security piece, which does sometimes take us away from the instructional side, but it is what it is. And, and those teachers know we do, we do the best we can. Thanks, John. I use this visual because I read an article just a couple of weeks ago regarding Virginia public schools and talking about where were we ten years ago and where are we today? And then trying to even wrap our head around where are we going to be ten years from today in two thousand thirty-three? And I don't think anybody in this room can tell us what this is going to look like as far as technology. But those are really your buzzwords from last, from two thousand thirteen and specifically in King George County schools. And some of the members are here tonight from the committee. We were in King George County ten years ago and specifically looking at like online assessment readiness. The state was just pushing out how they wanted all students to test online. And that was a really big deal because we were not one-to-one ten years ago. We had computers in carts that were wheeled through the school. We had access points that laid on carts that teachers would plug in and we would cross our fingers and hope that we had wireless access. It looks very different today. For example, you walk in the middle school on a growth assessment day and say, Dr. Nice wants to test two grade levels at a time. You're talking seven hundred students pulling a Chromebook out and having wireless access to be able to test on that Chromebook. And we do that right now, our infrastructure is robust enough to take that on. And, and we're certainly proud of that, and we work really hard to, to keep our infrastructure strong. But it just gives you an idea of how different things were ten years ago to today. Obviously, budget limitations and resource constraints are always going to remain a constant in public schools. Certainly, everybody always wishes for more, but we do what we can with what, what we are given, and we make the most of it. And I think we do a fine job of that in the department. Taking it one step further, I used these four topics because when I do attend our Region Three meetings with our technology leaders, it's all the same buzz every time. Cybersecurity is huge. What are we doing to keep our data safe, to protect the network, to protect our student data? And how are we keeping up with that? You turn on the news, there's a cyber event, there's a cyber threat somewhere in a school system. We're in that area where you see it a lot. And so we really try as a department and a committee to stay on top of the latest. And what are the softwares we can bring into the division to help with that? And then, of course, the infrastructure, maintaining that wireless, staying up on when enrollment continues to, to blow up for us, are we going to be able to? We're going to have to increase what we have now because in two years, we may be bigger than we are today. And then, of course, this financial commitment to the one-to-one model. It's a really great fear for our leaders right now because it's not about purchasing a set of Chromebooks that are going to get us through the year on a refresh cycle. It's about looking at how many devices did we lose? How many were stolen? How many were damaged? A cracked screen, hundred and ten dollars, missing charger, twenty-five dollars. And that is a huge hit to the budget. And it's really hard to predict from year to year how much we're going to need for that. So that's, that's a real struggle for technology. And I am forever talking to the committee about this because I'm always like, what am I missing? And how can we, how can we be prepared for that financially? So obviously, a really, a really large fear for your tech leaders. And then, of course, your modern technology acceleration. I really could take that out and just put AI in that bubble because what do you hear every day right now is artificial intelligence? Here it comes, virtual reality, gamification, all of these are coming in. Where are we? Where is King George County schools? And how are we going to adjust to that? Or how are we going to budget for that? Because the last thing we want is our kids to not be exposed to these things. So those are those big ticket items that as tech leaders in the region and the state that we're always having conversations about. I tried to pare down some of our biggest focus areas for the upcoming year. I will say your first and your last bullet very much align with our strategic plan and goal two. That is really where you see technology fall in, is the instruction goal. But this is really big, professional development, it's a really tough thing. It's, it's tough to make time for professional development. It's tough to find time for our teachers to attend professional development. But especially in technology, we cannot give a tool to a teacher without training. Just like we can't give a student a tool from a toolbox and just tell them to go and not tell them what it is or how to use it. Because it either becomes useless and a waste of your resources, or it becomes damaging to your network or damaging to your surroundings. So PD is really big for us, and I'm really looking forward to working with the instruction department on what can we do for our teachers this year? How do we find the time? They want new, they want new things, they want shiny new things, but we've got to bring them in, but then we've got to support them. So that's really big. And then, of course, we, people from, from my department, our network engineer, Mr. Vance, who is our lead tech, we are forever trying to stay up, what's coming next? Because that's, that's really hard. And again, I rely on my teachers because some of these teacher representatives are so passionate about technology that they know what's coming before I know what's coming. And they give me that phone call at seven thirty at night, did you see the news? Did you see this? You know, so it's really important, I really try to keep our, our lines of communication open, especially with our teacher reps because of that right there. Something else that you're going to see coming along is assistive technology. And we're going to work to partner with special services and the instruction department to enhance our student experiences with assistive technology. There is so much out there and available that we're not tapping into right now. Some are free, some are paid, and we need to pull people together to a table and really talk about how can we help all students? How can we meet the needs of all of our students in a financially responsible manner? So I'm really looking forward to serving on that committee that's coming up in October for assistive technology. And then, of course, digital citizenship is huge for both students and staff. Of course, we're trying to train our, our students to be good humans, but we also need to train them to be good digital citizens. And with that comes time out of a teacher's day, right? We have content, we have all of these content areas, as Hildebrand talked about. But somehow, we have to find time, this is what students are on all the time is our electronics. And we have to figure out a way to show them what's appropriate, what's inappropriate, instead of giving them so much flexibility that it starts to fall apart. And the same goes for our staff, staff awareness training. When you see a suspicious email, what do you do? Do you click on the attachment? Do you second guess it and check it to see before you click on the attachment? Those kinds of things that ten years ago, we just didn't have to think twice about some of those actions. So that's just where we are. So some, those are some of our focus areas. In closing, we have to remember, technology is a tool. It is not necessarily the teacher, it's a tool. Our committee feels very strongly that technology does not replace the quality of instruction a teacher can provide. It should be used to enhance your instruction when used appropriately. It should be used to enhance your instruction when used appropriately. And that is all I have. I thank you for your time, and we welcome any questions.
I don't have any questions.
Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Gonzalez.
No, I don't have any questions.
Oh, you don't? Okay. I have one, but anybody else first?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
So you'd mentioned the, the cost of replacing damaged equipment. So to what extent do we, those students responsible for damage they caused?
So when we have any type of damage, we offer a potential charge sheet to that student, and we make communication with the family, usually via email, to let them know your student's device came in and has a cracked screen. This is a potential charge for one hundred and ten dollars. If this is a financial hardship on you, please contact our counseling center or our social worker. And we do receive some funds that way. But we also have to keep in mind what family, we have a population that just can't afford that. And there are situations, a lot of that is based on situations. But we do charge our families there are times, and I, I don't know how we would stay alive if we didn't with the one-to-one commitment.
I have a question. You mentioned professional development. Is there, obviously you're encouraging, and you need to do that because you made a very good point in that all this new technology, new equipment that's coming, if they don't know how to use it, it's, it's a waste of money and time. Is there a requirement that, maybe this is a Dr. Boyd question, that, you know, there are so many days or hours of professional development for technology? I know they have requirement for professional development, but is there something specific for technology? Dr. Boyd, maybe that's...
At this point, we don't have anything specific to say a teacher must attend six hours of technology training a year. We do not have anything like that in place currently.
All right, that answers the question. All right, thank you. All right, do you want to go on to the five-year plan?
Absolutely.
Unless there's another question?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'll just, I don't have a question. I just wanted to add on. So I am a member of the technology committee.
Oh, okay.
So I have, you know, had the privilege of working, I'm getting to know more, like learning more about this right as things have gone on with Ms. Half and the rest of the committee. I just, I think I like, I shared this, I don't know, a couple, maybe last week with someone. I think, I think it's important. I know I won't be on the board next year to be involved in the budget development process, but as, but as, you know, we think about all of this, you know, you hear about like the, the, the list of requirements that are levied upon our technology department. They're not just the Chromebooks, it's all of it, right? It's our door accesses, it's our, you know, the cybersecurity piece. And for any of us who, what, the phones, it's, it's exponential, right? And if we all think about, you know, I know Ms. Half had in there the kind of like what things looked like ten years ago versus today. But even if, I mean, as you say, twenty years ago, think of, you know, all of our lives twenty years ago, or however many years ago, you know, we didn't have, we didn't have bills for the internet. We didn't pay for our, you know, multi-hundred-dollar smartphones, we did all of these things. And those are all added expenses in our own household budgets. And I would challenge that, I, I, I would, if someone were to go back and look at the numbers, I would argue that the technol, the budgets for technology support have probably not grown in accordance with how far technology has grown and those requirements. And so while I know our budget, you know, we struggle across many realms, right? You know, being able to afford additional positions and giving our teachers pay raises and things. But we hear a lot about readying our students for, you know, like that college career and civic readiness, right? All of this is a part of it, digital citizenship, understanding how to use the tools that are going to help folks get jobs. And I think, I think it doesn't get enough attention, while certainly I'm a big proponent of, you know, technology not replacing our, you know, human interaction and, and, you know, it doesn't, certainly doesn't replace a teacher. But nevertheless, it is a part of our lives, and I, I think more attention needs to be paid to make sure that we are where we need to be. Because I'm afraid we're, you know, I'm not sure we are.
That's a good point. Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. And it is a huge consideration for next year's budget as we, as we look forward to that. All right, any other, anything else? Okay, if you would, you can go on to that five-year plan.
Certainly, and just, I think you all have had time to review it. Going back to the strategic plan, goal two, quality instruction and innovation. You will know that there is a bullet down there that the technology department has been asked to complete a technology plan and an updated version to show what our plans are for the next five years. Even the state right now, Department of Ed, is working to revamp their five-year plan. And like Ms. Gonzalez said, I don't know where we're going to be in five years. We don't know what it's going to look like in five years. And so this is a living and a working document that can be adjusted at any point. This will be something you can refer to on our division website. And we worked a lot of hours as a committee to really put together what's important and specific to, to King George County schools. When you look at the four goals, those do come from the state, and those are therefore focus areas for that. The strategy column very much comes from Virginia Department of Ed. The strategies are, here's what we want to see our schools doing, our schools in Virginia. The indicators is a little more specific to our division and King George County schools, and that's where we really need to look at, how are we going to provide evidence to show that we are meeting those strategies? So again, this is a fluid document, just gives you an idea of, of what our plans are and what we think may, may be our future. I think if you really want to look on the, the second page, I think it's important that we see what the refresh cycle looks like and maintaining our refresh cycle. There is a lot there that has to happen, and we really have to look at this as a puzzle. What can we afford in one year? Because those are really big-ticket items. Replacement of access points is a, it's, it's a very large budget item. So we certainly have to play with that schedule. I certainly welcome, I, I thought this was a discussion I had, so I hadn't exactly planned for appropriate. If you want me to keep talking, I would be welcome, I would certainly do that for you.
Thank you for clarifying. Now, we're kind of waiting for you, you're waiting for us.
Yep. I, I didn't realize we were doing presentation. I would have put something together, but, you know, you have, has it had access to this, and, and I don't want to stand up here and read it to you. Those four goals, as you know, they encompass what we do as a school system and what we do for our students. And again, we're leaning really heavily on Virginia, on the State Department of Ed right now to make sure that we're in line with what their expectations are.
And Ms. Happy, you need a board vote on this?
We can. This is not a requirement of the state anymore that we have to turn in a five-year plan. So this is more, I want you to look at it as a compliment to the strategic plan and the goal two, and just know that that will always be an extension off of the technology section.
We might want the...
Go ahead.
We, we might want our citizens to know that our strategic plan is available on the King George County School website. And to get to it, you go to the, the, under the schools, it's School Board Office, and then you'll see the header for the strategic plan. So I think it's a wonderful, wonderfully well-put-together process and plan. And I, I really think, I, I suspect many of our folks have not read it thoroughly and, and especially all our candidates. I, I suggest that both the candidates for board supervisors and school board take a look at this plan and read because this is what you will be working on.
And we will certainly post the technology plan under the technology department on this, on the division website as well.
My understanding is we do not need to necessarily approve. This will be part of the strategic plan, so we don't need to have a separate vote on this necessarily.
Right.
But I do think it is. You're absolutely right, Ms. Hawk. Thank you for mentioning that. Is we need to be looking at this specifically when we talk about the strategic plan. Very good. All right, any other questions, discussion? I, I guess I have one is, you've mentioned a lot of things in terms of the needs, you know, professional development and just all kinds of things. What would you, in the, as, as a technology department, as a technology committee and group, what would you look at as pretty much right at the top? What would be your top priority in all of this for this coming year?
I'm going to speak personally.
Sure, go ahead.
Some of my committee members are here, and they know how I feel about this. Professional development and blended learning. We don't want to see our students on Chromebooks for seven hours a day. We don't want to see them. We have a fantastic LMS, a learning management system. But I think we really have to focus on a balance for our students and our staff to make sure that our students are getting that well-rounded day where they are, yes, they're on a Chromebook for this long, and they're doing face-to-face instruction over here, and they're doing science labs over here. And in the lunchroom, they're making eye contact with the student across the table from them. And I really think a top priority is always, technology is a tool, but it is not a replacement. It is not something to take away from the teacher, it is to help and enhance the instruction. And so I guess I would really just say balanced instruction and a balanced day, a balanced social day for a student so that we are not so tied to our electronics that our eyes are forever going on that, our cell phones at the secondary level. Getting students to put the phone down and make eye contact and be in the moment with other people in the room. And I, I beg you for teachers too, and for myself. When you're having a conversation, what are we doing all the time but relying on that next email, that next notification? And what are students doing right now, waiting for that next text from their friend? So top priority is figuring out how to incorporate our technology and these emerging technologies in a way that doesn't stifle that human relationship piece.
What tools do you need to accomplish that?
You know, there's a lot of blended learning professional development out there, and I would start there on the instruction side. Help our teachers design. You have a ninety-minute block. What are you going to do today during that ninety-minute block? What is an appropriate amount of time? You know, I'm not the expert in that, but I think that needs to be something worth thinking about.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, that's excellent. Thank you. Any other? All right, thank you very much. We appreciate it. Outstanding job. Thank you. All right, let's go on. We have the consent agenda, and we're, as Mr. Rolls had asked, that we are pulling the August third special meeting out of this, and then the September sixth regular meeting, we're pulling those minutes.
Yes, I actually said the twenty-first of August and September sixth, so I, I would call it August third.
So which one's, I'm sorry, twenty-first of August?
Right, and the sixth of September.
And I'm sorry, I wrote the wrong one. Thank you. So we're pulling out the twenty-first of August and the sixth of September. Any discussion on the seventh, July seventeenth and August third? Those minutes. All right, do I have a motion to accept Justice July seventeenth and August third minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Those minutes, the consent agenda have been accepted. All right, Mr. Rolls, you want to discuss the August twenty-first? You're concerned about that?
Okay. Trying to find the page, one moment.
Sure.
Okay, for twenty-first?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yes, twenty-first, August twenty-first, yes.
Page nine in the PDF.
Page two of those minutes, which yeah, is page twenty-nine of the packet. There's two instances of FOYA, spelled F-O-Y-A, which should be FOIA, or Freeman of Information Act. So just those two corrections there. And it's another one farther down. Let me scroll down and find it. Then it's page five of the minutes. And the section talking about the model policies. It's the second-to-last sentence in that paragraph. It says, "The board agree with the idea of the committee." So it's page five of August twenty-first meeting minutes. And if you scroll the previous page, that paragraph is for the model policies discussion. And the paragraph continues from page four into page five. And if you look at the second-to-last sentence in that paragraph, it says that the board agree with the idea of a committee. I'd just like us to strike that because we did not agree with the idea of a committee. We just asked Dr. Boyd to bring back an idea of how a committee might work for our consideration.
You see that, Ms. Rinko? Please, rest of the board, feel free to make a comment. Mr. Rolls is saying, all right, go ahead, Mr. Roll.
But I would be good to pass it as amended with just those two changes. It's fairly simple. Are we comfortable with that?
How does the rest of the board feel to pass as amended?
I'm fine with that. I just want to wait for Ms. Hawk to return.
She... All right. Why don't you go on to the next one, wait, see if Ms. Hawk comes back? And why don't you go on to the next one, and maybe we can both do, do these two together? So the...
Okay, the next one is just going to be in your email.
Ms. Rinko sent us an email for those corrections, board members.
And for this, I mean, you may or may not be comfortable changing this or taking it right now because it was basically, let me scroll through to where it was. It was all just things that I said. But I, you, I know you may want to review it, but it's looking at page three. A qualifications and then duties for the superintendent that I had said that it's the superintendent's duty to manage the curriculum and some more things along those lines. But what I actually was pointing out was under BBA, the School Board Powers and Duties, that it says it's a school board responsibility to oversee the curriculum and ultimately. And so, but then the rest that was correct, which essentially was that we talked about getting a presentation of how curriculum works at a later date. So yeah, it's a pretty minor change, but I mean, it's important to just say who's ultimately responsible. So I moved it from under CBA for the superintendent to under BBA for School Board Powers and Duties. Any concerns about that?
It's fine with me.
Okay, and the final thing, which is my board comments, having to do a lot with some of the details surrounding the idea for the joint meeting between the board supervisors and the school board. Yeah, there's just some, it had identified Ken Peterson as a superintendent in Kuchlin, but he's actually a board supervisor member. And then again, saying that it's a, the ideas for joint meeting between the two boards in King George, just making that clear.
Okay, so the changes are that Mr. Peterson is a board of supervisors member, not a superintendent. And what was the other one again?
And there's a clarification that the proposed meeting is a joint meeting between the King George Board of Supervisors and the school board for next February.
All right.
So again, they all pertain to some of my comments.
All right, board, is everybody okay with those? Let's give Ms. Hawk another minute or two and see if she comes back. If she does not, we'll move on those things. So let's move ahead, but we'll keep those two for just a moment to give Ms. Hawk a chance to return. All right, so let's go on to the advisory committees.
So what you have for you for the advisory committees is in your packet, twenty-two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four advisory committees. You'll see your gifted advisory committee and the makeup of each individual on that committee. Title-one advisory committee, health and safety advisory committee, technology advisory committee. And finally, on the second page, your career and technical education advisory committee. You see all the members that are a component of those advisory committees and just request your approval this evening.
Now, I was just going to, okay, this is for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. All right. So the special ed committee's not on here?
Yeah, should it, you're right.
I'm upset. It looks like it's missing. I don't know.
I'll check on that, but we can certainly approve on these tonight. All right, that's the CAC, right?
I'm sorry, I, I, I thought that you were on the CTE advisory committee. You're the school board member, and you're not listed. You're the school board member and you're not listed there. Maybe I'm incorrect.
This year, I think I was all...
Or what?
Yes, it does need to be approved.
So some of the things do, like I look at the health advisory committee and it does have, um, Ms. Hawke as a school board member, but, um, I'm just confused. I'm sorry.
Because we do have for tech.
Technology.
Yeah, we have Ms. Gonzalez listed there as well.
And it has Ms. Gonzalez on the technology committee.
So is, is it?
Carryover.
Yeah, so is the question, what, why the CTE committee specifically doesn't have school board members listed? Or why? Because that's just a discrepancy between that one and the other ones, right? It's not just Ms. Hawke and I listed. There are the rest of you listed on other ones as well, right?
So it's more the fact of approving these committees, but it should also include the special ed committee. So that was just inadvertently left off.
And if it's been inadvertently left off, we'll bring it next time, separate, which...
Ms. Hoover is identified on the gifted advisory.
Yes, yes, I saw that, okay. All right, so all that's missing is the special ed. So there's basically two, four, six. Obviously, these do not count the, um, oh, never mind. I'm thinking about a lot of other things. All right, let's, uh, do I have a motion to approve these committees? And should we also then include the special ed committee even though it's not listed on here?
No, we'll, I'll bring that.
You'll bring that back, so it'll be a separate approval? All right. Do you want us to go ahead, Dr. Boyd, and approve these five then?
Yes, please.
All right, do I have a motion?
I move to approve the 2023-24 advisory committees as presented.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. They're approved. Thank you. All right, now we have the action items and these action items, of course, are...
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Sorry, do you want to return to the?
Oh, thank you very much. Yes, Ms. Hawke, you were back. We wanted to wait. Um, we had some very minor changes to the August 21st and September 6th, uh, board meetings. Um, and, um, we were waiting for you to return. Do you want to go over those? They were, that's okay. They were very minor changes. Do you need to hear them or are you okay with?
No, I certainly press Mr. Rolls.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I guess that's what I was asking, wasn't it? All right, do I have a motion to approve the August 21st and the September 6th minutes as amended?
I move that we approve the August 21st and August 6th meeting minutes as amended.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We have approved those minutes. All right, let's go on now to the action items. Um, and all of these were, of course, um, discussed on the last meeting. So unless there's something more that needs to be discussed, I would like to possibly, um, let's look at maybe one, that religious, uh, religious exemption.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I have the FY23 budget.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, my fault. I was going ahead to the policy updates. I'm sorry. Yes, let's just do these in order. I'm sorry, thank you, Mr. Boyd.
That'll be quick. Yes, I think this is the final reappropriation for the FY23 budget. And just real quickly, this is a reappropriation. King George County Schools has a desire to reappropriate $213,889.57 from the technology and instruction administration categories to the category operation and maintenance listed above for year-end reconciliation. We've done this a few times, uh, this year already. This request is being made to cover the utility cost in excess of the anticipated amounts that had been received to reconcile the budget for Fund 250 for the King George County Schools' general operating budget. Transfers are completed to ensure that no expenditure category is overspent prior to the final annual audit and completion of the annual comprehensive financial report. Uh, so again, this is just like, uh, all of the utilities and gas and everything right now. Uh, our maintenance category, our operation and maintenance category is where those utility costs lie. And we are reappropriating funds from, uh, technology and instruction listed on the following page to that category. My recommendation is to recommend that the board of, uh, or the school board tonight, by motion, approve the King George County School request to reappropriate $213,889.57 from the technology and instruction category to the operation maintenance as identified on the attached document.
Do I have a motion or a discussion first? Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve the request to reappropriate $213,889.57 from the technology and instruction category to the operation maintenance as identified in the packet.
I second.
Two were seconded. Any further discussion or anything? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. It is passed. We can reappropriate those funds. All right, next is the religious exemption. This was mentioned at the last meeting. Um, and it was something that was sent out to all of us board members on an email on September the 6th where we had one more request for, um, the religious exemption from attendance approval. And we wanted to wait till all of you had a chance to read that. So hopefully you did. And if there's no discussion, do I have a motion to approve, um, that one religious exemption as identified, um, on an email to us on September the 6th?
I move to approve the religious exemption from September the 6th as submitted. I'm sorry, September 2nd.
That's fine. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Why do you believe it was the 6th?
I'm sorry, did I say?
I thought it was the 6th.
September 6th.
Is that, yeah, is that you said?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. All right, and what's seconded, um, do I, what's seconded? All right, do I? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Uh, that one exemption is approved. All right, policy BDDC-F3 disciplinary hearing.
Uh, yeah, so we discussed this, uh, last time and the, uh, request of the board was to take a look at, uh, bullet number five, action resulting from closed session and change that verbiage to, "I move that the King George County School Board approved disciplinary action as discussed and documented in closed session, period." And scratch the, uh, the line there that has the line drawn through it.
Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
So I, I think we're going to do separately, I assume. I'm good with that form, but the next, uh, page I do have some comments on. But we're going to prove that separately. Does that, do you understand that correctly?
That's, that's a separate agenda.
Yeah, it's a separate, separate item. That's the, uh, number D on action items. So we'll just cover this.
Okay.
I move that we change the wording of, um, file BDDC-F3 as presented.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. All right, now, Mr. Rolls, we come to the, uh, motion following student disciplinary hearing. Go ahead.
Okay, I think whether I'd recommend changes or not depends on how we're going to use it. It's, we've changed the use of this form perhaps. And it used to be that we would literally read this in open session, vote on it, and then, then what we read here would end up in the minutes. But I think the will of the majority of the board is to not do that anymore. So it depends how we want to use this. So if, if we're going to read this motion in closed session and take the formal vote in closed session, that would be unofficial until we vote in public session. That, I think this is fine. But if we just want to write down what the punishment is, then I don't think it should be written as a motion. We're not actually going to make the motion that reads this way.
I believe this is going to be read in the open session after the hearing.
Well, I think what we just approved on the previous page was to, instead of reading this detailed punishment, is we're doing a more generic motion in the interest of privacy is what I understood.
So you don't see a need for this form at all? Is that your point?
No, I just, it, I think it's confusing when we read it and we say, "I move that such and such," and then we don't actually second and vote on it. Like, we don't, you shouldn't read like it's a motion if we're not actually going to make a motion and vote. We could make a motion and vote in private just to make sure that we're all in agreement.
Even though it's not official?
Right.
What you're saying?
If we want to do that, then I guess it's fine.
But I think as Mr. Rolls notes, no action can be taken in closed session. So I, I think, um, that, that he is correct, that the wording to move something in closed session is inappropriate. And that, I, I think the form is appropriate for open session, but, um, not for closed session. And I, I mean, I don't know that I see a conflict because the, the, this says, "I move that the King George County School Board approved disciplinary actions as discussed and documented in closed session." That's all appropriate. But then when you come, when we come out of closed session, we do need to vote and have a motion. No? Yes? Maybe so?
Yeah, I was thinking, we, could we just take off "I move that" and just student?
Yeah, I, I think we could.
So you're saying that still would be read though? Obviously, it has to be read in closed session. But then it would still be read in open session, but we just take off the "I move"? Is that what you're saying?
I think it doesn't need to be read in open session, I think.
Okay, that's what.
It stands as a, as a
Okay.
documentation of what was decided in closed session. And then we're, we're voting to approve it in open session, but you're not going through the details. So I would agree, which I think is what Mr. Rolls was suggesting. Yeah, to just to remove the part that looks like a motion, right?
Yeah, and just simply, yeah.
Yes.
And use that same document in closed session, but just take off the "I move" part.
I think "I move that." An analogy would be when we go into closed session and we go over personal actions. We don't come in here and read everybody who was hired or resigned or retired. We just say...
It's a very good point. I agree, and it also saves time too. Excellent. All right, um, so how do we feel about just, um, as far as open session and that document being read? I'm just, um, I'm thinking we don't even need to make a motion on this except to say that we're not going to use that anymore?
Well, I think we need a form to document what the punishment is and we can all look at it and confirm. So all that I would suggest is, is that we get rid of the "I move." "I move that" and just say, "Student number..." And then you move it, da-da-da-da, violated the student code of conduct and will be, and list everything out.
Right, right. Well, I guess what I'm saying is, is that, okay, we need to approve the change to remove the "I move" from this document, which will only be used in closed session.
But I, and, and I am not the, the expert in Robert's rules, but, um, I, I think we have to come out of closed session in order to make this happen. And it has, there has to be some kind of statement in open session as to what will happen.
Yes, and that was the previous one we just approved?
I, I think in that, yeah, you look at the previous form, Ms. Hawke. I think that's what we're talking about.
Right.
Is we are saying that in that bottom line, "I move the King George County School," you know, in other words, we approve the disciplinary action as discussed.
And documented.
Without reading, without reading. See, the point is, we're just not going to read what the action was in open session because we've already decided that in closed. So all we're saying is in open session that we approve what was agreed upon.
Yes, I agree. I agree. Thank you, Mr. Boyd.
All right, no, I think that's excellent. But the point here is, I don't know if we need to do anything with this except to remove the "I move" because we're talking about just simply a disciplinary document that we're going to use in closed session. So I don't know if we need to approve this document by saying I'm, we're going to remove those words, "I move," since it's not going to be used in open session.
I, I, I agree. I think you could just make the change. No one here seems to object.
Yeah.
I can just take guidance from the board and...
Okay. And I, I agree with the shall too. I mean, let's leave that in there. That change was already recommended. So we just remove the "I move." It doesn't need to have a motion. This is what we're going to be using closed session to talk about what disciplinary action is being taken.
Yes, thank you.
All right, let's move on.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
One last thing, one more bit of housekeeping. If we make this change, the, the, um, the procedures that are read during a disciplinary hearing will need to be updated because there's a bit in there that says some, some, some about student will be referred to by number, la-la, and that will no longer apply.
Excellent.
So that should be, those should be revisited and updated as well.
Yeah, could you take care of that, Dr. Boyd?
Yes.
Make sure any reference to something being discussed in open session, we'll just take all that out.
Although the parent does need to be reassured of confidentiality.
Well, this would even be more confidential when you think about it.
Yes, yes, it would be, but we aren't stating that to the parent. But perhaps Ms. Fisher can clarify.
Right, I follow.
To the parent.
Yeah, that's a good point. All right, let's move on. Um, okay, policy JEG exclusion exemptions from school attendance. Dr. Boyd?
Yes, so if you draw your attention to the second paragraph, that was where we added the statement. I think I can start just at the beginning. "Any request for exemption under Virginia Code, such and such, must be submitted in writing to the King George County School Board four weeks before the first day of the new school year. Exceptions are to be considered on a case-by-case basis."
We discussed this last time, so unless there's any problem, do I have a motion?
I move to approve file JEG.
Just second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. All right, the policy updates. Again, we discussed all these, as I mentioned before, at the last, um, board meeting. So, um, unless there is a problem, let's do all these together. But I don't want to do that if anybody has an issue with any of these. So we're talking about the AF, the BBA, BHB, CBA, CBB, DB, EBB, IGBI-R. Do we need to discuss any of those? Or can we entertain us approving all of them at one time?
The only thing I want to add, Mr. Chair, is that everyone did receive a handout. We did have a revision to BBD. Uh, and you'll see that we just, uh, per Mr. Rolls' recommendation, we had a, we had a, um, an apostrophe there in the word "students." It's highlighted in bright green now. We removed that as it is not a, you know, ownership. So we just updated that and that will be the policy that goes into the, uh, policy manual. So that's the only change outside of what we discussed prior.
That was BBA.
Right. Uh, B-BBA, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. I was a little...
Okay.
All right.
I apologize.
So the only change was just some grammatical change.
Just a grammatical change.
Correct. That's very small. All right, anything else with any of these, um, updates? If not, we do need to kind of read each one of them. But if somebody can make a motion, reading all of these updates and then we'll have a second and a vote.
I, I move that we approve policy manual updates to policy AF, BBA, BHB, CBA, CBB, DB, EBB, and IGBI-R.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. All the updates have been approved. All right, we've already had the technology plan discussion, so now we go to committee reports. Let's start with, um, Ms. Gonzalez.
I do not have any reports.
Ms. Hawke?
Yes, I do have a report.
Okay.
And I'm delighted, uh, that I was able at the last minute to attend the virtual committee of the Chesapeake Bay Governor's School with Dr. Jason Strong as director. Uh, and the meeting was begun with a student presentation, which is always the best part. It's done by Davis Unser of Caroline County. And his study for the summer regarded the agricultural impact of fertilizer on growth in watermelons. This was interesting, especially because he was able to measure the exact amount of specific forms of the additives, and also because the number of agriculturally-based research project is relatively low with CBGS. And it is an excellent addition to the curriculum. It is on the CBGS website, so I recommend that not only those who grow watermelons, but the rest of us observe it because it's such a wonderfully example of student participation. We continued with budget information, and the budget was presented with the carryover amount from last year of 100, approximately $12,000. The school was able to purchase and updated minivan for student transportation to field activities, as well as two additional kayaks. And kayaks are used regularly by CBGS in their projects. Due to a decrease in the student number as a result of COVID, they feel, and therefore a reduction in revenue, the trend was concerning. But at this point, Dr. Strong believes that it is stabilizing and we should see an upturn. A decrease of 16 students occurred last year, three due to moves. But, and this is particularly relevant, 13 were due to academic-related issues, specifically math. And of course, this is throughout all the governor's schools and the state in general. Currently, CBGS has started after-school individual tutoring programs. And of course, because it's an out-of-location, out-of-school location, transportation is provided. So it's especially relevant, and many of their students are taking them up on this. So we're very glad to see this. The budget, as amended, was adopted with the need for an additional 1% for staff increase in January, but will be giving an additional 1% in order to get the new money from the recently approved state budget. And at that point, we all were giving our thanks and sympathy to all the financial staffs across the school divisions in dealing with this very late state budget. Currently, the enrollment report for King George at CBGS is 18 students, with the target for 24, 25 being 20 students. The total student body is 211, and the target number is 240 at this point. Dr. Strong is encouraging student participation by visiting schools, especially middle schools, and using focus groups of students to share with others in order to encourage support and attendance. Additional notes from the director's report included an information about an aquaculture program that, interestingly enough, the Northern Neck Food Bank is using to support things like Love Thy Neighbor projects and other activities. And it's got support also in an aquaculture program, partnering with Virginia Tech and the Northern Neck Vocational Program, as well as some middle school programs to develop a week of RCC learning with a paid internship of 80 hours. So I encourage people to go to the Chesapeake Bay Governor's School Facebook, I'm sorry, webpage and Facebook page for student interviews and more information, because this is a really exciting opportunity for students. Additional congratulations to CBGS for their 15th year in a row as being recognized as a Virginia Naturally School working in environmental education. It was a wonderful meeting, and I'm sad that I'm going to be leaving it at the end of this year. I keep hoping they'll create a public member on the committee. It is such an exciting group of students and group of staff and students who are so knowledgeable and so involved. This is an amazing addition.
Thank you. It was an excellent report. Mr. Rolls?
None just yet, though I do have a CGS meeting this Thursday, so then I'll have it for next time.
Have a report next time. Good. Hoover?
I have none, but I also have a gifted and talented meeting coming up this week.
And I have a lab school meeting, I believe, next Wednesday. Is that right, Dr. Boyd? And so it sounds like we're going to have a lot of reports at the next board meeting. All right, let's move on to the superintendent's report.
Yes, so just a few things quickly. Tomorrow night, there is a board of supervisors meeting, and it looks like there's a couple agenda items that could be of interest to the school division. So it looks like there's a resolution on there for preschool. So that certainly will be very good, very exciting. Wednesday morning, I want to remind everybody that we're having our King George County Schools in the Community Breakfast at the UMW Center at 9:00 a.m. So we've gotten a lot of good RSVPs back, a lot of good questions. So we'll fill in those that are interested in attending on our accreditation results, some of the initiatives we have in terms of outreach into the community through our CTE programs and other programs as well. So that should be a good morning, and I look forward to everyone being there. And finally, Friday, we have our first of this school year regional superintendent meeting, where I believe we'll start to get a better idea of what this revised budget means for school divisions specifically. We're still waiting for that calc tool from the state. We haven't received it yet. As you guys know, shortly after the budget was revised, Governor Youngkin came out with his all-in plan, which is kind of a three-pronged plan that includes literacy, attendance, and quality instruction. So tutoring is a big part of that as well. So we're waiting to figure out how these new funds may be or may not be tied to many of those initiatives. So hopefully by Friday, we'll have a better idea of where this new money is being geared towards in our operating budget. So we look forward to that, and that's all, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. I neglected at the beginning of the meeting to introduce our new student rep, and I'm sorry. So now is an opportunity. So if you would, we'll let you give kind of a report. But at the beginning, tell us your name and anything you want to say, and then go into a little report.
Hello, okay. Hello, I am Connor Wheaton. I am one of the three student representatives for the King George High School here in King George County. I am a senior for King George High School this year. And I'm glad to be a part of the board for the 2024 school year.
Oh, that's good. Do you have something, a report? We're all going to give reports. Tell you what, why don't we do this? We'll let you give a report last. We'll go through and give our reports, then I'll come back to you at the end if you have something to say about what's going on in the high school.
Yep, sounds good.
All right, so we'll go ahead with the board comments. Ms. Gonzalez?
Okay, I'm not going to be a good example this evening because I don't have much additional to add, but it is a pleasure to have you. I like the rotating cycle, so welcome to the board. Other than that, I do not have any comments this evening.
All right, Ms. Hawk?
Yes, I, as usual, have comments. I'd like to specifically make a comment about the chronic absenteeism. It is so critical. And I don't want us to regard this as the latest thing, the latest fad that somebody wants to look at. Absenteeism, and the old term was "fruency", has been around since the very first teacher evolved on this earth. So it is a continuing issue. And I have to say that back in the 90s, when I started out as a case manager, I was also the "quota truancy officer", unquote. And found it fascinating because I spent a lot of time on backwatches and kitchen tables, and not on the tables, beside the tables, and talking with folks about what their family needs. And this is what we call case management. And I think that as we get closer to action plans and state plans, I think we will find that the real need is still for that one-on-one discussion with families. And whether it's a silver-haired lady sitting at the table being grandma, or whether it's a young man actively talking about, "You know, your child might have some athletic talent", or "a music program that might be interesting if we could only get an instrument for the kiddo". There are so many ways to look at family structures and family connections. And that family connection is what brings the kid to school most of the time. There are exceptions to this, and that's why we have a wonderful juvenile and domestic relations court that will give us a backup and follow-up. And we've got a wonderful intake officer and probation staff, from which I stole our current attendance officer. So I think we do need to take it seriously. We need to look at it thoughtfully. It's not a knee-jerk. It's a very, very comprehensive program. And I want to thank Jeff Smith for all of his years of involvement. I do want to mention that the new funds for the Space Camp Scholarship are coming from the community rap, Hanukkah Foundation, Rap Hanukkah Community Foundation. And I think this is an amazing group of businesses and individuals in the entire region that comes together. I was very honored to recently become a member. And I think it does an amazing amount of good in the underground sometimes that we don't hear about. But this is one example of how it's a very locally supporting group. I want to go on and make a note that this election year is coming up, as we all know, we've seen the signs. And regardless of how sound candidates are, it's never a good plan to have unopposed candidates. We need to look at our community and say, "Why, excuse me, why do we have unopposed candidates? Why are people not willing to get involved?" Because it is an opportunity that in the long run, I think both Ms. Gonzalez and I will say, you know, we sometimes receive more than we give. I certainly do. In that the knowledge and the interaction and the community support is very much there. I don't want people to be afraid to run for offices in this county. I don't think you'll find it an unhappy experience. I think you'll find it a growth experience. And regardless of whether you're in the younger group or the senior group or somewhere in between, then it is a valid way of making a place in your community and making your community better. So I do encourage folks in the next election cycle to think about running. Think about what you can do for your community. And my apologies for being lengthy again, but I do want to note that the month of September is suicide prevention month. And one of the sad parts of COVID has been the aftermath of an increasing suicidal rate among youth. I think there are many, many things that we see happening around us that we need to pay attention to, and this is certainly one. The Virginia Department of Education has published a number of helps for both school counselors and parents and community members. I really do encourage you to take a look at these. If sometimes it just takes a moment to sit down with your child or grandchild or a neighbor child or a scout that you, or a church member that you know, and say, "Hey, you know, how are things going? Give me a minute of your time." And sometimes that minute makes a huge difference. And with that, I would like to wish our Jewish community a very special New Year. There is a wonderful song, and if I'd had the technology skill, I would have played it for you. But I'm going to have to say the words instead.
Can you sing?
I do not sing, and I don't think you want me to sing. I have hummed along with our choir for many years. This Hebrew song is based on Psalm 133rd, "How good and pleasant it is when brothers and sisters live together in unity", and it reads,
Did you want to say something about the paderin?
Yes, our invocation was to be provided by the Director of State Poles Episcopal tonight, who unfortunately was involved in a situation that he could not leave at Mary Washington Hospital. And thank you for Dave Bush for stepping in.
Thank you. Mr. Rolls?
Keep it short, but I'll also agree with Ms. Hawk that I believe it's not necessarily the most healthy thing for the community to have unopposed elections, no matter how good the candidates happen to be. So I think we should try to take steps where we can to encourage people to run. It's very important. Other than that, I'll just wish everybody a happy Constitution Day. It's actually yesterday, Sunday. But I do know there's at least one member of the community who's made it a point to come volunteer at the schools to teach about Constitution Day to help us be compliant with a 2004 federal law that requires that all institutions receiving federal funds offer a education program on the Constitution on Constitution Day. So obviously, that wasn't possible yesterday being Sunday, but I do hope that that's happening for all of our students this week, since that is so, it's an important thing for us to be familiar with. And it's not September 17th because it was September 17th, 1787, that the delegates at the Continental Congress all signed up on the Constitution. But that was only the beginning of a process. It wasn't ratified till the next year. It was actually hotly debated about whether we should ratify it or not between the Federalists and the Anti-Federalists. So now, so you can talk about the Constitution at different levels, your grade school level. But, you know, right now, I'm talking about more maybe high school level. You have Federalists debating with the Anti-Federalists. Anti-Federalists thinking that they were worried about creating a national government that would perhaps tyrannize the states, just like the Great Britain had. And they just fought that war to get away from there. Whereas, you know, Federalists were saying that there were some problems with the Articles of Confederation, where it was too weak, and we read about the Federalist papers making that argument. And I think it's very informative now to not only read the Constitution, but go back and look at all the discussion debate around that. See, they are making their predictions over 200 years ago, but what would happen if they approved this? And they did, obviously. But so now, what are the arguments of both sides? I think it's very important for us to think about, or our students to know about, as we try to train them to be self-governing citizens in the future, and especially for elected officials and Constitution officers who've sworn an oath to the Constitution. Something that we need to mull over as well. And I also say that a lot has happened recently that has got me to dig in more. I mean, I thought I got a pretty good education, fortunate to get a good K-12 education growing up, but I realized that it maybe was not all that it needed to be, or all I wish it would be. And so, and that was where I think I was fortunate to have a good, really good education. So it makes you wonder about what kind of civics students are getting everywhere. It's probably something you should maybe look at, make sure that's all that it ought to be. I won't go into too much depth right now, but I do think maybe the next meeting I'll bring in some questions I saw of knowledge that kids while on go in American schools were getting. At the elementary school level, they probably really just put us all to shame right now. It is pretty impressive. You can imagine how it was a lot more important to past generations closer to the Revolutionary War. They just got over fighting against tyrannical government, where they wanted to make sure that their students, their kids knew the Constitution and what they fought for and why. And as we get farther away from that, it gets harder, I guess, to remember when it hasn't cost us anything personally or anybody that we remember in our families and it cost them. It's easy to take for granted. So yeah, I'll be bringing that next time. And that's all for right now.
Thank you. Mr. Rolls, Ms. Hoover?
So I would also piggyback off of Ms. Hawk's, one of Ms. Hawk's comments about speaking to students and having conversations. And I had the pleasure with Mr. Bush of going to the high school on Friday and basically just sitting down at different lunch tables and talking to the students and seeing how they felt about their education. And it was just nice to talk to them and he- And it was just nice to talk to, talk to them and hear, you know, hear about their impression. And they're happy with their education and what they weren't happy about and different things. And just, I think that I appreciated talking to them and their opening up to me as much as they appreciated us just listening to them. So thank you for the opportunity. That's all.
All right, I'll say a few words and then we'll ask the student rep to say what he has to. Several things. First of all, I want to thank the ROAR squad from Seal Street Elementary. And Mr. Stat, as he mentioned about absences in his public comment today. And of course, we had quite a long conversation about it. And I thank you for the reports that were given, both for the technology and then also for the state accreditation. Thank you, that's a lot of work and I appreciate that very much. And obviously, one of the big things going on is attendance, which was talked about a lot tonight. Also, the space camp, I was very impressed with. Sarah, I don't remember her last name, but I think her first name was Sarah. Zook, okay. What an excellent presentation. Wow, when you look at students like that, you, it's easy to be very proud of what's going on here in King George County Schools. And so it's wonderful to hear that. Then that $5,000 scholarship is going to be given by the CFA and several things going on there. Anyway, that was, that was quite, I think it was Ms. Gonzalez said is the highlight of this evening with all the other stuff going on that we had to do. So I just appreciated that very much. I wanted to say that I did enjoy going with Ms. Hoover to the high school. I think altogether, I'm just a guess, probably around maybe 40, 50 students. Obviously, that's a small percentage of the whole student body. One of the things I want to mention specifically is, right near the beginning, I told Ms. Hoover what I had asked. And I think we both asked after that. And I just simply asked the students at whatever table we were sitting at. I said, on a scale of one to 10, I don't, nothing to do with bathrooms or with custodial things or with discipline, I said, put all that to the side for just a minute, although they're important, just your education you're receiving at King George High School, where would you rate it on a scale of one to 10? One being the worst and 10 being the best. And I would say the average was right near eight. Eight out of 10. I was, that was very impressive. Now, there were a couple that was like below five and it had very specific reasons and didn't surprise us. But anyway, it's very good to hear that. And overall, the students overall were, were pretty happy with what they're, what they're receiving at King George High School. So that was really, really good news to hear. And they opened up, but it's kind of, I don't know if it was surprising or not, but they were not afraid to talk. And once we just started asking questions, they quickly opened up. They wanted to know who we were, of course, that, and we assured them that there's going to be no report about them afterwards. But anyway, it was, it was kind of fun doing that. And we're gonna do it with the middle school, not this week, but next week, and then the elementary schools. And again, we'll send just the comments some of the students made. Mr. Ms. Hoover and I are putting that together and I'll send it to all the board members and Dr. Boyd, just to kind of hear the comments from a small segment of students. Oh yeah, on Thursday, I'm going to the V S B A Legislative Advocacy Conference and kind of looking forward to it. I think I have a lot to learn and hopefully I'll learn some things.
Mr. Chair, I couldn't quite hear that. What are you going to?
I'm going to the V S B A. Let me get the exact name. Legislative Advocacy Conference. To kind of talk about all the things in terms of the legislature and what the state is doing and how it relates to what's going on in the schools. And I can imagine some of the topics that we'll be talking about. All right, let's hear from our student rep.
Thank you. So at the high school, we have recently started, we have recently started doing a new pass system where on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays, we have been offering a whole multiple amount of clubs for all the students to attend at during the time of pass or providing, providing rooms called choir rooms or academic support for each room that, for each room that a teacher offers, where a student can work and work on their academics if they need to. I'm very glad that this, this system is in place, that students can now have a place to go and actually enjoy and work during pastime, especially now that all these clubs are available to all these students. How about that? This Saturday, I know that K G H S Royal Regent Marching Band is getting ready to compete at the Riverbend Competition called Emerald Classic. Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, they'll be practicing, rehearsing, and getting ready to compete against other schools in our high schools around the region and possibly out of state, depending who comes. For, for I believe football team, they are also getting ready for a James Monroe home game this Friday. I'm not exactly sure how rehearsals go for them, but I hope, I'm pretty sure they'll, they're definitely getting ready for that game so they can up their score. And one more thing, I'm, I have to say that last week, when nine, when the anniversary, the 22nd anniversary of 9/11, a good majority of teachers at K G H S took their time during the teaching in class, at the beginning of class or somewhere in the middle, discuss about the terror attacks that took place on September 11, 2001, discussing about how it changed the United States, how a lot of things we do now were caused by these terror attacks that happened on that date. In that they also express sorrow and condolences to people who lost their lives that day. And they also mentioned how, how it also affected them and asked students how it affected their family before they were born. I was, I was moved by how teachers did that for beginning and middle of classes that day. And that's all I have.
All right, thank you very much, Connor, right?
Yes.
Thank you very much, Connor. We appreciate it. We're gonna, you're gonna have to forgive us, there was rotation of three different student reps at high school. Have to get accustomed to the names every time, but thank you. So I guess it'll be a few weeks before we see you again, right?
Yes, the next school meeting is going to have Tony Brown there. And the following will be Chad Brown, and the third after that would be me.
All right, good. Well, thank you very much, we appreciate it. All right, do I have a motion to go into a closed session?
Pursuant to State Code Section 2.2-3C of the Code of Virginia, a move that the Board convened in a closed meeting to review retirement, hires, substitutes, and stipends for discussion specifically the evaluation of the division superintendent and as permitted under Section 2.2-3711A, Number 1 of the Code of Virginia, and for discussion concerning a prospective business or industry or the expansion of an existing business or industry where no previous announcement has been made of the business or industry's interest in locating or expanding its facilities in the community as permitted under 2.2-3711A, Number 5 of the Code of Virginia.
Have a second?
A second.
All right, we are now in closed session.
Vote.
You can vote.
Oh, we need a vote, sorry. All those, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, votes aye, we're now in closed session.
Okay, do I have a motion to return to open session?
I move, I move the King, am I on? Move the King George County School Board return to open session and certify that pursuant to State Code Section 2.2-3712D, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under this chapter and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting by the public body.
I second and certify.
Certify.
And the chair certifies. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, we're now in open session. All right, Tom, action resulting from the closed meeting. Do we have a motion to approve the personnel is presented?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. All right, adjournment. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, we are adjourned.